2016, for further consideration of the 2016-17 budget. Present is Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dewire, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. John Llewellyn. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As in the past, some board members sent in questions. I want to compliment the staff and to have both the public and also the board members take note of the packet that is in front of you. There's a Q&amp;A statement dated January 26th that I think responds to about 80 or 90 percent of the questions that you asked. All of them are listed. You might find some of the answers are not as full as you may want, but given the timeframe that some of the questions came in, this is what staff were able to put together. People asked for the price quote on curriculum associates, if you will, the contract, one related to STAR, that is in your packet, the 1231 food service statement, a list of the breakdown of the painting account was asked for, the allocation of spending to student population, Attachment 5. So in your Q&amp;A statement, it will reference, I think, Attachment 5. That's in your packet. And then a report from the Connecticut State Department of Education, their data section on analysis of special education and public transportation, and then another one related to elementary, middle, and secondary per pupil expenditures. So all of that documentation is in front of you, and so for those of you who were asked questions related to it, you may want to check the answers that are in that Q&amp;A statement so that you don't have to, I'll say, repeat the questions unless there's more conversation you want on that particular question. We will also, and so thank you to, I'm going to say Dr. Tittle, but the staff who probably put it all together are sitting out there in the audience, and so thank you to the staff for gathering this information. Similar to last week, we'll divvy up the time, about 10 minutes each, and go around the table, see what last questions might be here, try and finish that up around 9:00 PM. And at 9:00 PM, we could get into a discussion of any recommended changes that board members may be contemplating making in the budget. As you know, when you're talking about a program change, the costs of those programs are spread through a variety of lines, salary, benefits, supplies, and whatnot, and so we really have to rely on the district finance department to say, here's the true cost of that proposal, here's the true savings of that proposal. And also, in fairness to board members, that your fellow board members know what you're contemplating and can give thought to that subject so that they're not kind of having to react to it at the last minute on Thursday. So we'll do that, and then we'll go to the public for comment on the budget, and then back to the board. Like last time, I'm hoping that we might get over by 10 o'clock, but that's up to the board and their discussion. We will have a final discussion. Generally, it's pretty limited, but final discussion on Thursday if there's any final question that board members need to ask prior to the vote on the Thursday budget, which is needed so that on Friday it can get submitted to the first selectman's office as per town charter. So with that as a description of what tonight is about, who, and with enough time so that people might say, okay, I'm ready to ask some questions, who would like to start off? Mr. Llewellyn.
Actually, could I ask a question? Could we please tonight go through the, this part because of the way it's organized, come from front to back rather than going around and we can ask questions as we kind of flip by page like has been done in the past? I think, given the organization of this section, that might be a lot more productive.
Well, how about if I do it this way? Because I don't want to flip through each page, that could take forever. How about if I ask if there are any people have questions on Section A, we'll go through that, then Section B, we'll go through that. So do it section by section. That way, it's in order, but there's a lot of pages here to try and flip through one at a time. So I have no objection to that. Please, the purpose of doing it 10 minutes at a time is to make sure that each board member has, quote, "equal time," and so it makes it more difficult to track that as the chair who's trying to make sure that that happens. So please, respect everybody's time and try and ask your questions for a fact basis as opposed to argument. Time for argument is Thursday, time for fact gathering is here. So, Section A, which is budget detail by object, pages 53 through 105. Do people have questions on any of the information in those pages? And if you do, if you could make sure you remind board members of what page you're looking at so that both the staff and the board members can get themselves there.
Yeah, this is on page 54, and I don't think I see Ms. Tylee here, but, so I don't know if I can get the answer right here and now. I just was looking this over again, and I noticed that the number of teachers is being reduced by 3.6 at Roger Ludlow, but the other two schools are not going down by that much. And as, looking here at the sheet, it seems like the enrollment's only going down by 13 students, so that just seems like a kind of big number of teachers to go down in one school. I just was curious if there was any, and if there's nothing, you know, if there's no one here tonight who could speak to that, I don't, I can get the answer later. I just, I'm sorry, I just noticed it, so.
Well, it's an artifact of where the kids are and how many kids are on each team, and so it's basically driven by a formula based on the predicted enrollment in each grade, and Ann goes over that carefully with the principals. So the same rules are applied to every, you know, to every school in that regard. So Ann goes over that. Do you want to talk about that, Ann? Yeah, come on up. I didn't see you were hiding back there.
And for the benefit of the TV audience, if staff could remember to state their name and position.
Hi, Ann Leffert, Director of Human Resources. So as Dr. Tittle said, we review in the fall the projections for enrollment, and at Roger Ludlow Middle School, there are reductions in grades six and eight for classroom teachers, but an increase in grade seven. So it balances out to a 3.6 classroom teacher reduction. And then there are some ins and outs of special area teachers as well, but the greatest impact is in classrooms in grades six and eight.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Carnell.
We can stay on those pages. I guess, looking at just some of the schools, Sherman, Roger Ludlow, Holland Hill, Dwight, I'm trying to follow the calculation for teachers that are being added or subtracted, and then the change, they don't seem to always line up. Dwight is adding one teacher, but it's going up 273,000. Holland Hill is adding one and a half teachers, that's going up 300, almost 335,000. Mill Hill is losing one, that's down 115. It seems like the different teachers have different values at each school.
That's true. They, so when you're comparing budget to budget, you're looking at who's actually in the position versus who we thought was going to be in the position. And so you may have budgeted for somebody who was at a certain salary level, but through attrition, through transfers or whatever, somebody else goes into that position, and so then that can change the dollar value greatly either way, even though the FTE doesn't change much.
I don't really have much more to add to that. That's exactly what happens, and it's, as I said, budget, as Dr. Tittle said, budget to budget. Those are the changes that appear, so they are actual salaries that we're projecting to be in those positions for next year.
Right. The best way to look at something, when you're looking, although it's not on those pages, when you, if you have concerns or you want to really see what's going on at a given school, that's that section that starts at 107. So that's probably the place to really get the best view of that, because that shows you the full view of all the accounts for a given school.
For the new board members, we do not budget based on average cost of a teacher at a school. We budget for specific teachers at a school, and depending on the step that they are in, whether they shifted to another school and got replaced with somebody at a different step, and so the budget can change quite dramatically because it's very specific to each teacher.
So actually, I want to follow up on that for a second. I'm sorry, because there's a bit of a quirk that can make that effect worse this year, and it's as follows. When the 15-16 budget was developed, and we were budgeting for retirees, we took, in the current budget, in the 15-16 budget, we took 14 positions that we thought there was a pretty good likelihood a person might retire, and we lowered that salary by about $36,000. Now, if that person didn't retire, then their real, their full salary's in here, and it's carried forward. For 16-17, we changed the way we did it, and I don't know if people asked a question about that, but you'll see in here that we budgeted for 18 retirees. Somebody asked about it, so I might as well point this out because it undoubtedly will come up. And rather than attach, I'll try to guess as to who those folks are going to be, we decided to put it into the staff turnover line as a lump sum, and so that makes that, that particular line is going to be huge, about $648,000. But the lines in the actual budget don't reflect any retirement, so that's going to make some of these numbers vary even, even more.
I was having trouble with my math.
No, it's a good question, because I asked the same thing. How can we go in up one person and it's $275,000?
I think Mrs. Lou McCormick wanted to follow up on that same subject.
Yeah, like on the reverse side of that question, like when you, when you go to Stratfield, I just want to understand on the reverse side, like, they lost three teachers, but they only go down negative 23,000? That just seems like, I guess I don't, it's very interesting.
No, I, it's, believe me, we, I ask these questions to Doreen all the time as we do this. Are we sure? Can we double-check those salaries? So it's, this reflects who's actually there and teaching and what their current salary is, and then what their salary will be next year. That is not necessarily entirely accurate compared to what the budget is. In the aggregate, it all works, but all it takes is turnover, promotions, changes, people leaving, where you can save, you know, if three people leave, you're going to save $100,000 even though your FTE count hasn't changed. So that's all it is, is it's the, the 16-17 is, at Stratfield, for example, they're actually going down 2.4 in the teaching staff, 36.3 to 33.9.
Right.
So those, the, that represents the actual people that are there and their, and their current salaries. And this happens at all the schools, it happens every year, because where people are situated now versus where they're going to be in the fall can vary greatly. We're going to have to move people around. We eliminate five positions. There's going to be all kinds of movement.
I understand that.
That's how it just, how it plays out. So I think, yeah, to kind of, if you're concerned that, you know, something's going down a lot or not going down very much, if you just, the best way to look at what a given school is getting is to look at the FTE counts. That's how it plays out. I don't, Doreen, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, it just doesn't, the math just seems so like, look at Osborne Hill. Is it even stranger? No. Let's see, so that goes down by two.
And it's going down by 216,000.
That makes sense to me, right? It doesn't make sense.
No.
No, it should not. Because it looks like each teacher is about 100 odd, no, but it's not.
They're not.
No. Okay.
Oh, there might be 70, in that range. So you're going to get somewhere, you get wide changes.
And this is due to, I'm sorry, Mr. Calabrese, he looks like he is dying to respond.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Calabrese, do you want to comment?
I would just like to point out as well that the more teachers a school has, the greater the change is going to be. If you look at the larger schools like the high schools, you have almost half a million dollars worth of change, one way or the other.
But it's just a body, like an FTE is just a body, right?
Well, they're real, real-life teachers.
It's like a full-time, like a full staff position.
Yeah, but they're salary, yes. But they're attaching everybody's salary, so if you were the teacher there and you're making 55 this year, you might be making 58 next year, so you're plus 3,000, where, you know, I might retire, now my salary comes off, they replace it with a brand-new teacher, you know, who's making 40,000 less.
So you've also got, remember, you've got everybody moving, you've got people moving up a step.
See, I get that, that makes sense to me, but the Stratfield one didn't make sense to me because we were, we're not replacing staff, we're just losing staff there. And so you would think that each staff has got to be in some total worth more than $23,000 for, oh, two and a half staff positions.
But you also have staff that's going to stay there, and they're getting raises too.
Right. Steps, raises, they can be moving across on the salary schedule, getting a doctorate as opposed to a master's. Doreen, looks like she's.
Yeah, sorry. You may have said this, but I didn't hear if, whether or not you said this. There's more of a correlation between the estimated actual, because those are the people that are currently in the position. Excuse me, so that's what the 16-17 budget was based on, those people that were in there. Does that make sense?
Yep.
But this is a question that we've dealt with for the last five years that I've been on the board, because the budget is based on not just bodies, but real human beings who teach our children, who earn a specific salary on a specific step or might be getting a specific degree change, and so there's a great variation from school to school.
I understand.
That just occurs. Mr. Llewellyn.
No, I was just going to comment. An example, I think, of what you're discussing is Dwight. If you take a look at Dwight, there's a, the budget is basically right on target with the estimate, and I'm on page 53. So there are 29.4 teachers, proposed 30.4, so they're going up by one FTE. The current budget and the current estimated expenditure are right on target, yet you have a 13 percent increase year over year, and if you adjust for that extra individual, then you have a 10 percent year over year. So I think that explains, you know, when you've got a 3 percent pay raise, I think that's the genesis of your question.
Right.
So if you look at it in the aggregate, because we actually do it with real people, so there's no money hidden in here. I went through and actually was curious because we had a 3 percent, if you remember the teacher's contract was 3 percent increase was the listed number, including the steps. And actually, that was two-year, you know, this is the second year of the three-year contract. And so, all things being equal, given that the FTE count for the teachers is roughly the same, it's going up by one, you'd expect to see the salary account, certified salary account be about 3 percent. Now, that can change because you can have people who leave and people that come in, the whole nine yards, and if you actually go through there and add it all up, it's almost exactly 3 percent. So in the aggregate, it makes sense, but the individual teachers who may be being moved around because classes are being added or subtracted from a given school are going to make the individual schools vary, but in the aggregate, unless there's grant money coming in and out, it's right around the number that you would expect it to be. So there's nothing, nothing added in here that shouldn't be there.
Other questions from board members in these, in Section A, pages 53 through 105? Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Just one follow-up, one follow-up to the salaries question and where the master, so through the chair to Dr. Tittle. Dr. Tittle, so you're saying that on average, when you're budgeting, instead of doing the whatever, 12, 14, 25, two, whatever retirees, we're now basically going to take that as a flat roughly, would you say, 30-something percent?
It's 36,000 a teacher.
That's, oh, that's right, that's the 30.
And somebody help me find out what page that's on.
What page?
74.
74?
Thank you. All right, so if you turn to 74, 133 staff replacement. So in the current year, the way we budgeted that was certified staff replacement, this is non, that was, that's non-retiree staff turnover on the certified side. We estimate that we are going to save $350,000. Non-certified staff replacement, $110,000, no change in that estimate for next year. So this year, we took the 18 retirees times $36,000, and rather than scatter it through the budget, all those lines, which is why some of them are bigger than you would expect, we put it all in here so it could be, it's cleared everybody, how much money are you budgeting for retirees? And it's right in one place. You don't have to go try to find where it is. In fact, the problem with putting it into individual lines is some people have their own line of the budget, and they might look themselves up and say, oh, I didn't know I was retiring. So rather than get into that predicament, we decided, and because people were always asking about it, we just decided, we're taking it as a lump sum, there it is, and that's where it comes from, Mark.
But the way that you are figuring out how many replacements or retirees times the 36,000, that method has not changed.
No, that's Ann and I sitting in a room saying, what's our best estimate?
Okay, that's really what I was.
And, you know, we've never been right, so there's no reason I think we'll be right again. What I will say is that I've never been right. I mean, it's like, you know, trying to win the Super Bowl pool at Rotary, you know, you got to, anyway.
Dr. Tittle and I are not going to talk about the Super Bowl.
Nor are I.
Based on last Sunday's.
Right, I understand. I was an open question, open, open season on me.
You got?
Anyway.
Mr. Patton, have you gotten your answer?
We make our best effort at it, we just budget differently.
Okay. Mr. Llewellyn?
Can I call the welcome mat?
Mr. Llewellyn, do you mind if, okay.
Okay. This was the question I had sent in, and I referenced page 32, and the answer I was given was to please reference page 32, which I had looked at.
Yep.
So I acknowledge that this is my, no, actually, you still need to stay on page 74.
Okay. I'm just going back to 32 to see what.
Because that's where it explains that these are retirees, and I understood that to begin with.
Okay.
What I don't understand, and I'm sure this is an accounting thing, but it's still, I just would like to understand it, I don't understand that why what it says for proposed 16-17 is the 998,000. Why isn't the 648 on that line if that's what we are anticipating for this year, as opposed to it being the change number?
Because we have a 350 in there as a base for non-retiree turnover, so that continues. We're still counting on that. So now we're adding the retirees to that number, and so that's why we end up with the 998. So if we had.
Oh, see, I assumed that 350 was including.
No.
All that's, okay.
No, so there's two, there's two kinds of savings that can accrue to us, that we budget accrue to us during the year. There's retiree savings, and there's non-retiree turnover. We get somebody who gets appointed to be a vice principal of a high school somewhere, and they were a highly compensated teacher, and they go off to be, you know, the athletic director somewhere up north, right? And that person will get replaced at maybe a lower salary by some amount. That's non-retiree turnover, and that's been, so that stays. We weren't making any changes in that. So you add the non-retiree turnover to the retiree turnover, and now you get your 998.
And that, I thought the 350 was including retirees, so we simply had.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Couple hundred thousand more, so thank you.
No, 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 no. So we're on the hook for that amount of money.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn.
No problem, thanks much. Okay, so if we could start with a general question. Throughout here, we have a new, I think it's a new line, line 51, which is.
Page 51.
Is that a location's code?
Is that a location?
It's throughout.
Pick a page so we can.
Page, let's see, page 55, let's start there. So what is, what is the community partnership program, and has that been, is that newly broken out? No, that's been there, I just haven't noticed it, just because I guess there's so many increases in it.
So, community partnership was budgeted for the first time in 15-16. It was not budgeted in 14-15, right? And if you want to know what that is, Andrea can explain what it is.
Please.
Go ahead, Andrea. Yeah, just a brief overview of the community partnership program.
The community partnership is a program.
Again, if you could, for the TV audience.
Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education and People's Services. The community partnership program is a program that works with some of our students with more significant disabilities from age 18 to 21, where we're working on post-secondary education, vocational education, and independent living skills primarily in the community.
Okay. And how many folks do we have in that program, approximately?
We have currently, I think it's 27, but we are beginning to get larger numbers coming in from the high schools over the next few years as our students with autism spectrum disorders start moving through the grades.
Okay, so what are you planning for next year in terms of number density?
We're looking at upwards of, final PPTs haven't happened yet, but we're looking at approximately 37, 10 additional students.
Okay, thank you.
And we've added non-certified staff there, and a little bit in the certified, but mostly non-certified.
Primarily non, a little bit in certified, speech and language pathology, I believe, but we added non-certified staff. It is really a model of individual students out in the community, so as you can imagine, it is somewhat staff-intensive.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Wait a second, do you have other questions that you think Andrea will be responding so she doesn't have to come up and back and up and back?
Feel free to stay.
Sorry.
We have, for the Walter Fitzgerald, the administrator, which would be, I guess, location 50, we have a 15 percent increase in salary. We were budgeted last year at 128. It appears we filled the job at 142, and we're going to 148.
So what happened there, that's not really an Andrea question, what happened there was, that was a new position in the budget this year. That was one of our ads. So when we budget for a new position, we budgeted that position on that salary grid, I think it's step one for that position. What happened was, we posted the position, and we had an existing administrator transfer into that position who was more experienced. And so the actual salary being paid for that position is 142, 219. Now, somebody came behind and filled that other vacancy, but basically, you know, you budget a new position at a certain amount, and then when you really fill it, so you can see that the actual expenditure this year is going to be 142, 219, and so when you move that up a step and, a raise, it goes up to the 147, 907.
Okay, thank you.
If I might interrupt for a second. If you look further down last line on page 59, you'll see that there's actually, while we increased special education coordinators, if you remember last year, there's actually a decrease in salary that accounts for moving the higher, more experienced person to the Walter Fitzgerald campus, and we hired a less experienced person into her job, and actually, two people in that, and it still resulted in a lower salary overall. So you can see how the movement of staff.
Those are associated. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm just going to go in order, so I apologize, we'll probably skip you and come back.
Great.
Perfect. Page 68, please. 123 Info Tech Support. We have a 17 percent increase for adding one FTE, but we, yeah, that appears to be a little high.
It is, are we? So that was asked and answered somewhere, but if I remember, that has to do with a couple things. One is. One is, the FTE count for next year is not going up.
Correct.
If you see that, it's fifteen and fifteen. But we had a vacancy and different needs around the district, so we moved some, one position from the elementary to the secondary level. That comes with a higher pay grade. And then we also added, made these folks into twelve-month positions from ten-month positions.
Okay.
Most of the work, or not most of the work, I hate to say most of the work, a lot of the work these folks do is in the summer, obviously. So that accounts for the other differential. I think that's the whole, and then there's an increase in the contract, well, actually, there wouldn't be an increase in the contract, because those, that contract's not settled. So that's solely a function of someone moving from elementary to secondary, and positions being twelve months as opposed to ten months.
But were they twelve months in fifteen, sixteen, or no, for the first time sixteen, seventeen?
They're not twelve months yet.
Okay, thank you. That does account for it. For, if we look, starting on page sixty-nine, we have part-time employment, and we go by school location. Do we not budget for substitutes within special ed? Because I see the budget's always zero, but there tends to be spending. Do we just do that differently than we do normal subs?
Ann, you want to try to explain that? Come on up. How we budget for subs, always a mystery.
And Mr. Llewellyn, I want to make sure that other board members have a chance to talk. How many more questions do you have, so I'll know about timing?
Well, since no one else has spoken, I can take all their ten minutes.
That's because they have not raised their hand out of deference to you.
I have a number of questions, so after this, we'll come back.
Okay, if after that, if I can at least poll the board to see if anybody else has questions. If they don't, I'll go back to you.
We could go back to page by page, it might be easier.
Sorry, go ahead.
Ann Lefort, Director of Human Resources. So budgeting for subs is always, you know, a guess. We don't know who's going to be out at any particular time, who might be on a leave of absence, long-term leave, those kinds of things. So where you see a higher amount, like if you take a look at, sorry, Dwight, the subs, subaccounts, we've tried, been trying to merge into one account, so we don't have all these different accounts for subs.
Okay.
And what happens when we overspend on a subaccount, we know, we know that there's going to be areas where we overspend, but we gain that money back through salary, folks who are on an unpaid leave of absence. So we're able to take the salary account and move that money into the subaccounts, and so that really comes out in the wash. So we could change numbers on here and try to fit with each year the way things happen, but we'd be chasing our tails the whole time we're doing that, because it's gonna change every year.
No, that makes sense. So you don't just use an average, you kind of say that the zero is gonna wash through?
Correct, and with the salaries that, that take care of that.
Okay, no, that makes sense, thank you. Would you like to come back?
Pause for a moment, are there board members that have questions within this section, pages fifty-three through 105, that you'd like to get the question in, and then, does that mean you're still looking, or that you don't have any questions?
Oh, mine got answered on the handout that we.
Okay.
Answered.
On this section, other anticipated questions? If you know, hands up, continue, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you. Page seventy-four. And I know we already talked about staff replacement, but if we look at degree changes, we have actuals in the last, for fourteen, fifteen of zero, and we have estimated for fifteen, sixteen of zero, yet we're budgeting 270,000.
So this is another fun one. So Ann can come back up, and while she's coming back up, there's a couple of quick answers here. One is that when a teacher gets a degree change, we go and expend that money in that teacher's account. So there's never any expenditure in here. That's the first point. That's why you always see a budgeted number and the actual is zero. That's one part. The second part is that it's highly variable based on which teachers are anticipating getting degrees, and so we don't just budget an average number, they actually have to tell us. Ann?
So every September, an email goes out to all of our certified staff, asking who is anticipating a degree change in the coming year, so whether they're going to complete their degree in June of 2017, sixteen, August of 2016, or December of 2016, they'd be eligible either for a full-year raise or a half-a-year raise, depending on when they finish. So they need to tell us ahead of time, we actually budget the actual amount, it goes in here, and again, that money is then in hold to then put into the actual teacher's salary and their actual, in their actual salary account. So anyone who does not tell us that they, like, oops, I forgot to tell you that I'm getting a raise, we have to have them wait for a year, because we budget for each of these individually.
So what were the actuals for last year?
I don't have that number in front of me, I'd have to go take a look at that, I can get that number for you.
For the last two years, I'm just curious to see if.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And I understand it's based on a pro forma, but I'd like to see how history.
Sure, yeah, and again, we look at the history, and there's, these are actual numbers, and so there are folks who put in for a budget or a degree change that don't, in fact, finish their degree, so those get put off until the following year.
Okay, thank you. And then, actually, you might be, I'm not sure, retirees are at zero in the next line, 201, for healthcare, business services. So we've got insurance, I see that we've got the savings have been put on the healthcare prescription line, but there's no savings for retirees. Are they, they're moving to the new plan?
They are.
They are.
So we, starting in fifteen, sixteen, we merged all, you could see in the previous year, fourteen, fifteen, it had been split out. We merged it all.
Okay.
And so that just reflects the whole merger. But yeah, all retirees and all actives are moving to the new plan.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then on page seventy-six, under 303, People's Services, line 54025, consultation, that, is that the ESS?
Page again?
I'm sorry, page seventy-six.
Okay.
That's ESS.
That's ESS, that.
Partially ESS, predominantly ESS, and some adjustments to occupational therapy as well.
Okay, but if we stay on line 54025, consultation services. We went, we had a budget for the current year of 150. We shifted from tuition up to this line, and I'm assuming that is the delta between the 150 and the 797.
About $650,000 of that.
Okay, 650.
Right, so that's about right.
And then we're going up another 170 next year?
Yes.
And what, what does that consist of?
It consists of OT. The contract for ESS remains the same. It constitutes the additional funding put into OT. We've historically been kind of underfunded there. We also have a slight, very slight increase, 1% increase in our OT contract for the hourly rate, and then a very, very minimal increase in services overall throughout the district, pre-K through 21.
But, but the OT, does that fall under the line two down from it? I'm sticking just at that increase of 719. Top line consultation.
That, I'm sorry, I apologize. That is for other consultative services throughout the district, for kids with low-incidence populations, kids with unique needs that we need to bring expert advice in to develop their programs, onsite support for teams that are struggling with a student with very unique needs. So those, that hundred thousand dollars is kind of spread throughout the district for different individual kids' programs.
And how big is the team from ESS here onsite?
Onsite, we have two staff at each high school, one at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, and a regional director who provides clinical supervision for all.
And is that regional director shared with the other three Connecticut schools? Or is that just for us?
One other Connecticut school right now. One other Connecticut school.
Mr. Llewellyn, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly wanted to follow up on your line of questioning, so when you're.
Sure, go ahead.
When you're ready.
No, I'll just come back to it, that's fine.
No, it's the same thing, I just wanted to point out to, for Mr. Llewellyn, because obviously, that's a number that jumps off the page. We had talked about that on, and it's outlined a little bit more detail on page thirty-six, and that's where, no, I'd written down the comment of the often underfunded, you know, that that's one of the things that this is hopefully trying to make the budget reflect more real numbers. So just in terms of the verbiage, if that was helpful.
Yeah, no, thank you, because we talked about it in September too, but I see it's going up by another 170, so I didn't know if, if that's going to ESS.
No.
Or something, so none of that's going to ESS.
That's, you know, we have kids across the district who have very unique needs, individual programs where we bring consultative supports, perhaps, you know, consultation with a psychiatrist, a consultation with a speech and, expert speech and language pathologist, or an expert in a particular low-incidence population. So that covers all of those. It look, it's a big number, but it's spread across a large number of kids.
Okay. And then I guess, through the chair to Dr. Title, could we get a copy of that contract for the ESS? And I know, and actually, I want to come back to, to this, to the budget Q and A. Your point number one, a copy of the contract for curriculum associates related to I-Ready does not exist. And I guess I should ask you.
It's in there.
Well, you said a contract doesn't exist, we have a purchase order.
That's all it is.
So how do we protect our students' data?
That's all done by the company.
Okay, but what are the terms? So I looked up, when I was looking at ESS, I looked up online, other Connecticut schools, and they've got 22-page contracts that say, data's protected this way, here are your rights, here are your responsibilities. So we don't enter into any of that, we have no safeguards?
We do have a contract with ESS.
Okay.
We do have a contract.
But, okay, could we get a copy of that, please? And then, I'm trying to understand how we don't, with something like I-Ready, when they've got all of our students' data, how we know what the data protection is, who has rights to it, and the like.
I don't know, that was off my head. Do you, anybody want to jump in on that out there? We'll have the tech person answer that question.
I'm Nancy Burns, the IT manager for the district. I'm not familiar off the top of my head specifically with the I-Ready contract, but, or agreement, but most of, most if not every agreement we have that is not under a bona fide contract. For example, Infinite Campus has a specific contract. We have a license user agreement, and that specifies that they have to comply with COPA, FERPA, and all the other privacy rules that we fall under. I'd be happy to pull up I-Readies and see what I can determine to respond directly to your question.
You know, that'd be great, because I'd like to understand, you know.
Sure.
How our data is protected, that's not being sold, who's got access to it, who doesn't have access to it, not just for I-Ready, but, you know, for STAR as well, as we're headed more toward, towards STAR.
Yeah, we're very careful about what we use. As a matter of fact, we train our teachers about even the freeware that's out there. We have a whole process for them to evaluate the privacy rules, and whether they need to get parental approval to use certain subscriptions and that sort of thing as well. So we're very careful about that.
Okay, good.
But I'd be happy to respond to you on that.
Okay, perfect. And actually, while you're here, I'll ask you this question, if I may.
Yes, but, and looking at the time, we do want to get through the other sections, and so I can't spend from now until nine o'clock with your questions on just.
That's okay.
Section A.
That's fine. So when I look at this, when I look at the answers that were handed out, STAR, the purchase order, not the contract, says that it is for language arts.
The contract with Renaissance Learning was purchased under an agreement that was negotiated by the RESC CES. And in that agreement, we were privy to using it for reading and for math as part of the contract. It was actually cheaper to buy it under the RESC contract and get both math and reading, although at the time, we weren't using the math portion of it, than it would have been to buy it outright just for reading, outside of that agreement. So when we discovered that contract and went for it, we purchased it for the purpose of reading, which is why the purchase order reads the way it does, and then since that time, we've evaluated the, the two programs, and I'd defer to Mrs., Dr. Boyce about the decisions that were made to move from one to the other, but that's the story.
So although this says that the licenses for STAR reading under the CES consortium contract, you're saying it really includes the math as well?
Right, and it's, I don't know if they gave you the quote that that was built against, which is in the UNO system, but it specifically shows that math and reading are in there, and which schools. So that's all part and parcel.
And then it says under the I-Ready that reading is included, too?
I'm not sure about the I-Ready one.
I-Ready, don't ask.
It was at a, I don't know that I wrote those responses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Shall we move on to section B?
Michelle.
One final question? I'm sorry, and you've, okay, so Mr. Patton, followed by Ms. Carnell.
Mine is rather generic, going back to our favorite subject, health insurance. Is there any, I guess, to Dr. Title, is there any administrative savings in terms of staff time cost between being self-insured before versus being on this state plan, or is it just a different, kind of moving responsibilities around, just different stuff to do?
It doesn't appear to be any staff savings on our end, until, it's gonna be a lot of additional work on our end to move everybody over. First of all, this is a tremendous.
That makes sense.
Project between now and June, and then there probably will be additional work, because whenever you make a transition like that, there are issues. There's gonna be issues, there're gonna be calls, and they're gonna come into our insurance office, and even though they may have to get redirected to the vendor, it's still gonna be work, there's going to be hiccups on that for, for, I would say, for at least the first year, there's probably gonna be more work in the insurance office rather than less. Eventually, it will settle out, because a lot of questions that come in the insurance office about what's the benefit for X, Y, or Z, because everyone's on the same benefit package, the insurance department will only have to keep track of one set of benefits. Right now, I think there's seven, eight, nine different, more sets of benefits. And so when somebody calls up and says, is this procedure covered at 80%, or is, what's the, you know, then they gotta go scrambling around looking for, all right, which bargaining area are you in, and so forth. So in the short term, it's considerably more work, but they're willing to do it, because the payoff to the district is so high, and we're not asking for more staff to make this happen.
But in the, let's say, seventeen, eighteen budget, you don't anticipate there would be any, any change in anything based on, like, the.
I'm just trying to make it through sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
I will say that the Affordable Care Act requirements are not changing for us, and that is on us right now, and will continue to be on it. So many of you have, maybe if you are employed, have gotten this little notice from your employer that said, oh, by the way, we're gonna give you this 1095-C form, or something like that. Well, guess who gets to produce all those? Our insurance department, and it's a monstrosity, and that is not going away. So I do not foresee any drop-off in the workload in that department into the foreseeable future, unless there's a sudden change in the Affordable Care Act. Thank you.
Ms. Carnell.
Through the chair to Andrea. And forgive me, because you may have answered this, so, how many pupils are using, are involved in, in ESS at Ludlow, and how many at Ward?
We have seats for 18 students at each high school, and nine at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. That's what our contract allows for, but those are, those are fluid seats. So students could come in and only stay perhaps a semester in the program, get stable, stabilize, and then go to a lower level of care, and a new student can come in.
Right, that was kind of where I was going, because it sounds like the program is really working well.
You know.
It's the beginning, but look, let's look positively. So are, you know, are students that may benefit from this not able to get into the program? That's why I was asking, how many seats?
Again, we, you know, when we sat down with ESS, and we were looking at this with our high school colleagues, we talked about what, about how many kids would we be thinking about, who were the kids we were thinking about, and that seemed to be a good startup number. Right now, we're reaching the threshold at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. We have a few more seats right now at each high school, so we think we're pretty good. We'll see as the year progresses, and then when we start to see our first kids actually stepping down from the program, you know, it's only been a little more than one semester.
Right.
So, you know.
So far, so good.
So far, we're very optimistic. The data for those kids is really looking great, but we haven't seen our first step-down, step-in cycle yet, so we'll see what that looks like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So on to section B, the budget by.
Can I do a follow-up question on that?
And departments. Okay, try and be a little bit more like, so I don't miss you, please, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I can only be so fast. So this new program, since you don't have, we don't have evidence as to how it's actually So, this new program, since you don't have, we don't have evidence as to how it's actually performed, but it looks good, what did we do before? Was there an alternative? There was no alternative, so before, they would have just-
Before, what was happening was our school psychologists and school social workers were spending 90% or more of their time on this very, very small group of students. So, what happened was, either we were outplacing these students at large numbers, which we've talked about year after year, or the students who were at lower levels of need, but still in need, those needs were not being met until they rose to a level of crisis. So, we did a lot, we were doing a lot of crisis management at the school staff level. What we were hoping to do, and what we're starting to see as these kids get into this, I keep calling it a program, and it's really a misnomer. It's kind of a constellation of services, because the kids are still going to class all over the high school, right? So, it's not a kind of educational program. It's a therapeutic program overlay on top of their school-based program. It keeps them stable, keeps them able to come to school and access the educational program offered by the Fairfield Public Schools.
So, is this an after-school?
No, it's during the school day.
It's during the school, so they get pulled out, and?
Their schedule gets adjusted to provide that service during the school day.
I see, okay. And are we anticipating expanding this? Is that the idea?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
No.
So, the idea is to limit it to the, was it 45 kids in total, or something?
That's where we think is the sweet spot, but it's a startup. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to say that and then come to you again when we see there's a higher need, or even a lower need. Right now, we think we have it right, but we'd like to go through a whole year and see it kind of move forward before we report on it to you in the long term.
And the idea is for them to get this service, you think, for about a year, and that that, and then you have a new 45 coming in the following year? Is that how this, or no?
No.
It just depends.
It's not, this is individual-specific. One student may stabilize in a three-month period, another student might take a year and a half. It's really going to depend on the individual student and their response to the support that they're getting.
Okay, and one last question. Does this then free up the social workers and the psychologists with them? Because I know we had, in the last budget or two, we had been adding social workers and psychologists just for, probably, to help address the need. And now that we have this, is this going to then relieve our need for?
It's going to return our school psychologists and our school social workers to what I would call tier-one and tier-two supports. ESS is like a tier-three support. It's for our most intensive kids. Tier-one and tier-two supports of our school psychologists, getting to kids really early, before they're in a crisis, is what we want to focus our school staff on. And we're starting to be able to move that forward with these kids, with more tier-one and tier-two supports. It's not going to result, this was not brought on to decrease our need for our school psychs and social workers. This was meant to allow our school psychs and social workers to do the job they were hired to do while meeting the needs of these kids who are in very high need.
Okay, so then, the additions that we had put on in prior years, last year or two, weren't necessarily related to this group of kids? It was just a general, the rest of the population need?
That's right.
So, it's a prevention strategy, essentially.
Well, it's a prevention strategy. It's a strategy to keep kids who are academically really capable, musicians and artists and all, with all kinds of needs, who wouldn't be able to make it in our high schools without this level of support therapeutically.
Thank you.
And so, that's what our target is.
So, on to section B. That's pages 107 to 119. There's only 12 pages there. Why don't we do sections B and C at the same, because there's only two pages in section C? So, any questions on pages 107 to 123 from board members?
Where in here would we find the sum of legal expense projected?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The sum of legal expense, because I think it's broken into a couple of different areas.
It's back in the prior section, but, Doreen, you want to find that? It's a purchase service, 300-something.
Page 76.
We'll find the line.
Page 76, page 77?
Yes, it's, yes, it's in page 76. It's in superintendent's office, legal services.
So, $600,000 for 16, 17 there.
Correct.
And how much of the $400,000 down in line 62, page 77, of that is legal? Is that where it falls as well?
That's not legal.
That's not. Where's the legal?
All the legal services are in that one line, correct, Doreen?
Right.
Special ed and regular ed.
But actual last year was north of that 866. Actual last year, I thought, was 970 some odd. I think-
That looks like the number.
...legal services are in a couple of different areas. Ms. Munsell, do you know?
They are all in one, the one account. I don't have the $900,000 figure with me, but I'd have to see what the difference is.
But it rings a bell, right?
Hmm?
It rings a bell, though.
Sorry?
That's hard for somebody to say whether it rings a bell when they've got $160 million to keep track of.
Well, there were so many transfers out of last year, I would tend to disagree with you, so. I think it probably would ring a bell, but that's fine. Thank you.
We have provided reports on past legal expenses by various ways.
I know you have, and that's why I'm looking in here, to see where it goes.
Any other questions on pages 107 through 123 from board members? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Going once, going twice. On to section D, which is the support information, starting in pages 125.
And the rest of the book.
Through 177, which is the balance of the book. Do, are people looking through to pick up the question they were going to ask? Or are they, do they know that they're not going to ask a question? Bring the microphone down, if you want.
I guess I'll start on page 140. For staff changes, again, more of a general question to Dr. Title. It's not, I would assume it's not normal, other than maybe a 20-year cycle, to have, you know, bubbles and, you know, certainly, we've had our share between that and all the construction at the various schools in the last eight to 10 years. So, when we're in a situation like we're in now, where basically, the bubble has now shifted from elementary to the high schools, so we've got pretty much, you know, whether it's a tiny amount, or a few, you know, we've lost, you know, nine-plus teachers, or FTEs, at the elementary level, and gained about the same at the high school, and secondary levels. But-
But wait a second.
I, well-
That's not exactly correct.
Okay.
So, would you like Dr. Title to kind of summarize what this page means?
Before he does that, it's not, yeah, I wasn't trying necessarily that it's apples and apples. It's kind of more the opposite. So, because we've, maybe need less teachers at the elementary level, and we need more in the secondary levels, when these bubbles happen, and these shifts happen. But if it was the opposite, where it was going to the elementary school, I would say it would be easier to say, needing less secondary teachers, elementary school teachers might make less money, or they're, you know, they require less advanced degrees, you know, for maths and sciences and so forth that you need in the secondary level. I guess, is it an issue, or does it affect the budget greatly, especially this year, when this shift is really happening for the first year?
No, it has nothing to do with that. The elementary teachers make the same money as the middle school teachers, the same money as the high school teachers. I don't know that there's any difference in advanced degrees from one or the other. So, because again, if you think about it, you've got a 3% contract, and you've got a 3% increase in your costs. So, it all averages out. Basically, we move the teachers to where the kids are. And right now, the kids are in the high school, so we need more high school staff. They're taking more courses. It's great. And we're encouraging that. We don't need as many elementary teachers, so we don't budget for as many. So, happens the way they fall out in the middle school. We don't need as many classroom teachers there. And then, there's other adjustments that we're making here. And we are adding the Elementary World Language in grade three, which is a 1.9 addition. So, that's really separate and apart from any enrollment changes, is that's in there as a pure add to this. And there's fractions in other places, most of which we've talked about either in October or November, or recently. So, basically, budget based on where the kids are and where the needs are, and it really does not impact the individual teacher salary in that regard, if that's what you're getting at.
Partially the salary, and partially more the experience level, where you, you know, if we, you know, need a few less teachers at the elementary level, but, you know, we have to add, you know, whatever math sections, you know, you obviously can't take an elementary teacher and make him teach, you know, algebra II.
Right, right. You could, you could end up in a situation where, you know, you're, although we've, I think this year, three-quarters of our new hires had experience, so it's not the case. We're hiring at step one all the time, and that's even true, and that's true at all levels. But sure, you can have a situation anytime where, you know, an elementary teacher exits, and to replace that person with a similar high school, say, science position, we might have to pay for a greater level of experience. So, that could, in individual cases, happen, because there's a shortage of certain high school teachers, and so, the pool to draw from is shallower. But we've hired experienced people at all levels, so it could happen, but it doesn't have a large effect on this budget.
It ends up being balanced out.
It washes out, yeah, it washes out.
Does her job to make sure everybody's where they need to be.
Right, right, right.
Other questions on this last set of pages, 125 to 177? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I'm looking at page 155. Just, I just had a couple of just clarification questions here, under the school psychologist, .5 at each high school. And it says, "This is for timely comprehensive evaluations to students in grades nine through 12 in the Community Partnership Program." I guess, sorry, up again.
But that's a big part of it. The evaluation piece is huge.
Right, so, but I guess I'm just interested, just in terms of how they split themselves, like, is it between, like, being the high school and the Community Partnership Program? And also, does this have anything to do with the ESS? Like, is this tied in with that? Or is this, like, does it work with them at all? I just wanted a little.
Do they work with students who receive the services of ESS?
Well, just, or are they, that's, I don't know, if you could just give some-
The school psychologists at our high schools are the sole people responsible for conducting psychoeducational evaluations at the high school level.
Okay.
So, while we have other mental health staff, we have other school counselors and social workers, the only people who are trained and qualified to conduct the comprehensive evaluations are our school psychologists. So, right now, our school psychologists are averaging 50 and 60 comprehensive evaluations a year, which is huge. That's a lot of evaluations, and it takes them away from doing any other direct service, consulting with teachers, helping them know how to teach those students based on the evaluation that's been done, working with, directly with students, direct contact with kids, doing executive functioning coaching, those kinds of tasks. So, this small piece, you know, a .5 psychologist at each school, whether, I'm not sure everyone's aware that our students are required by federal law to be, to have a triennial evaluation every three years at minimum. So, every three years during the course of their education, they require a comprehensive evaluation. So, in the period of time from ninth grade to 21, which is seven years, they could have at least two comprehensive evaluations per child in special education. So, if you think about that in terms of order of magnitude, additionally, it's very frequent that our college-bound students, as part of their transition to post-secondary education, the colleges are requesting that high schools perform a psychoeducational evaluation so that the schools can help meet their disability-oriented needs in college. So, we also provide that at no cost to the families and students.
Okay. Yeah, that was it on that page. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a-
Waiting for a hand to go up, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Can we go to page 151? Or is that beyond the scope? The reason I'm focusing on this, because I understand we're going to be funding the purchase of the elementary math textbooks, hopefully. And if we are going to do that, and I believe we were not going to purchase the social studies textbooks, was that the plan for this budget?
That's correct. For elementary.
For elementary, right.
Right.
I guess my concern with the math is, if we are going to fund the purchase of a textbook, but we haven't reviewed the curriculum to understand if the curriculum, how it's performed, and if in fact, we're making changes for it, to it, to improve it, or if there were flaws to it, and we're funding the purchase of a textbook without having first reviewed it, this is kind of, I guess I'm having a little bit of a quandary as to how we can fund something that we don't understand how it's performed, and what is exactly that we're buying, that we need to buy? It's a little backwards, and so I think we've talked about this on and off several times. And I would like to, at some point, make the suggestion that we have a review included this year, prior to our approval of the new textbooks, so that we are all on the same page as to whether the curriculum needs to be tweaked? What, we are doing a review this year?
That's exactly what's happening.
Okay, good.
There's a calendar.
Oh, I wasn't sure. So, this said, is that what this SU?
Yeah, that's what it is.
April.
Okay, so we're going to do a full review. Perfect.
So, April-
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Doing a status update.
Okay, so what's that?
We're not doing a full curriculum change. We've done that.
Not a full curriculum, but is it open for tweaks and amendments at this point? Or are they just reporting? Or are we actually going to have possible recommended revisions to the curriculum? I guess I'm not clear what a status update is.
Well, we've had it, we've only done it once, so it's a bit open-ended at this point. This is an idea that got hatched in the last couple of years, I think, at board members' requests.
Yeah.
And so, it's a bit open-ended. We've only done one so far. We did it last year in art. And basically, it's a report from the staff on what's gone well, what needs to be tweaked. Doesn't necessarily mean the curriculum documents itself are being tweaked. Sometimes they're working on implementation guides. In the case of art, you might remember, they made a change, and they broke a year-long course up into two semester courses, so that they could get more kids in the advanced levels of art faster. And so, the reason we tied the math book into this was, this is a time to say, "All right, if there's some things that aren't working as well, and a textbook would help, then it works beautifully, because we can come and say, 'Here are the issues we've had. Here's where we think it's worthwhile to invest in a textbook to help with those issues.' The problem with waiting to budget for that, until you've made the decision on the textbook, is that you would not be able to purchase it and implement it in September of 2016. So, the idea would be that we would, if, you know, teachers have a textbook to recommend in April, then the budget money is there, because it's such a big number. The budget money has to be in there to do it for September. Otherwise, you have to wait a whole year.
I understand. I guess I was, wanted to clarify that R/R versus the SU.
Yeah, it's different.
Because the R/R seems like a much bigger thoughtful analysis versus a status update. I wasn't sure if that was actually a review of performance, or if it was just-
Well, they're both thoughtful.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, we haven't gone through a status update, so I'm really, I'm not really sure what that entails.
So, the RR is a full year of reviewing our existing curriculum, but also reviewing any changes that have been made in standards, and assessments that need to be made. So, it's a full year of study by the teachers, under the leadership of the curriculum leaders and the directors. So, that's what RR is. You don't really see much with that, and then the next- And then, the next year, they actually write the curriculum, and then you get it usually in the spring. So, that's what that means. And then, status update comes later. So, we will present some data about student performance, to the extent we can, you know, make some judgments about how well our kids have been doing with the new curriculum, we will. And that's what the status update will be.
Can I clarify, and Dr. Tidal, correct me if I'm wrong, we're budgeting for a math textbook, but we've not selected one, so whether we buy one or not is not yet determined.
That's correct.
And, if, but we will be recommending a social...
Studies.
Studies textbook, but we'll defer the purchase of it, because we want to make room for the math textbook, should we recommend one, so that the teachers aren't trying to implement two new textbooks and major subjects in the same year.
That's correct.
But, if we don't find a math textbook that we want to rec, that the staff want to recommend, and the board wants to accept, then that might open the door for social science to be purchased.
Then that would be the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we would, if, for some reason, we don't end up buying a math textbook, for whatever reason, then we'd be able to do the social studies. The social studies materials, texts, and so forth, for elementary are much less expensive than math. So, we're covered. We're basically budgeting the more expensive of the two.
Thank you. Other questions?
I just need to, can I finish my thought?
Do you mind if Mrs. Gerber follows up, and then back to you, or do you...
Well, I just have, just one quick follow-on, it kind of just goes with this.
Feel free.
As we purchase the, the text, does it going to be, does it have to be Common Core aligned still? Is that still the line of thinking?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's no...
Common Core is still the rule in Connecticut, until further notice. The answer is yes.
Might not like the answer, but we follow the law.
Don't follow the state.
And Mrs. Gerber.
I just, I just went, had a question regarding the social studies textbook, since that was brought up. So, I know it's just going to be, the new textbooks are just for grades six through eight, and then the new courses that are being proposed for high school, correct?
Right. We, so we have US History as well.
Okay.
So, on page 150, Meg Boyce, make sure I get this right. So, on page 150, under Social Studies, pre-K to 12, you see text and materials for $403,714, right?
Right, yes.
So, the textbooks in there are all three grades, six, seven, and eight. She's nodding. And US History.
Yes.
And the two new courses that we anticipate...
The sociology and the comparative.
What's that?
It's the sociology and the comparative. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Exactly. So, that's what we, that's how we've budgeted that.
Okay. And I know that the reason why you didn't want to do the elementary was because of the math, and then you said, "If we don't do the math," and, but I was just curious, I mean, because there are other history courses in high school, so is there some plan to deal with those? Because I know some of those books are kind of out of date as well.
Well, we picked off the ones that really need...
Right.
The most replacement, and the ones we think we can get another year out of.
Okay.
Part of this is to balance off the budgets, year to year. So, I half joked that I'm not really thinking about the 17, 18 budget, but in fact, I am.
Right.
So, there's only so far you can go. What I wanted to make sure we did, was, if we go with this path, that next year, we have sufficient funds to buy the rest of social studies, and then science. And not have the budget go exponentially higher, or fall off a cliff.
Right.
And so, this balances it off, and I think the teachers, in consultation with the curriculum leaders, and Dr. Boyce, determine that courses either have a new book, like, say, AP Psychology is a new book, so we don't need to buy one there, or the teachers are okay with one more year. They can teach the new curriculum with the old book for a year, and then we'll upgrade it the following year. So, that would be the plan.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you.
Meg, do you want to say anything more about that?
Okay.
Okay.
Final questions on pages 125 to 177, from other board members?
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
How about Mr. Patton, then Mrs. Lou McCormick?
We're not using that company that Texas uses to buy these social studies, history books, right?
That's a rhetorical question. Yeah, that's for a thought. Please.
I won't answer it. Can I give a rhetorical answer?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
It giddy after a while with this, you know?
Page 161.
Budget humor.
Technology capital outlay.
Mm-hmm.
I was looking to see if this was answered in the first round of questions, or the second, I didn't quickly see it. But, the non-reparable equipment replacement, $295,000, did we go over what roughly that was?
Nancy, why don't you come up and...
Is it just standard printers and whatnot, or is it like specific? It sounds like it says, you know, stuff that can't be repaired.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you in the back. Could you repeat the question?
So, the non-reparable equipment replacement, which is about $300,000.
Yep.
Is that, well, first off, is that about an average amount per year? Is it, is this a larger...
It's a, and it's about an average amount per year. We've gone up a little bit, because we keep adding equipment, in particular multimedia projectors. Rather than doing a full replacement plan, we sort of go as, we replace them as they die, as opposed to, like with computers, we kind of know what the useful life is. The projectors have a useful life normally of three to five years, but if you're in, if they have a particular classroom where a projection system's been installed, but it's not used very often, the projector might get you a longer period of time. We've been spending so much time trying to get projectors into the classrooms, you know, and you'll see that we're trying to finish that up as part of this plan, that we haven't done a formal replacement yet, because we haven't finished getting all the classrooms set up. So, part of the, part of this is to handle those things that break that we don't expect. One of the other strategies we've put into place on things like mobile devices, which we've started to buy quite a few of, in comparison to the desktop units, because of the kind of work that we're doing, the assessments that we're doing, and because of limitations, especially at elementary school, physical plants, you know, they only have the library lab. They might have a converted classroom, but it's not like we can just create computer labs, because we just don't have the physical plant to put them in. So, rather than buy laptops with an extended warranty on them, I did an analysis, and I watch it every year, it doesn't pay us to buy the extended warranty. So, if I have a laptop that dies after the one-year warranty, I replace it. It's less expensive for the district overall to do it that way, than to buy all those extended warranties that cover, you know, maybe, you know, 10% of what we buy, if that.
We started to do that with our computers at work as well. Those warranties usually just don't cut it. So, in, in general, the, would you say, a good chunk of that, that non-replacement tech, non-reparable stuff is, you said mostly is the projectors, which are obviously fairly expensive?
I would say it's a big portion of them, because we don't have a regular plan of refresh for that yet. But, a lot of them are also printers. I'm trying to change that with, as you see, there's, I did an analysis of the printers we have that are over 10 years old, and those are the 278 or so that are in this budget, as a planned replacement. So, that's something we will attempt next summer. The non-reparable stuff is the stuff that'll break over the course of the year, that was not part of that replacement plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you have another question?
Yes, one more. Through the chair to Mr. Cullen, if he's here.
I'll go back.
Through the chair to Dr. Tidal, who will ask Mr. Cullen to come up.
Ask Mr. Cullen. Okay, that too.
Formal here.
Trying to say we get more formal in every day. Page 163.
And again, introduce yourself for the TV audience. Go ahead, ask your question, Mr. Patton.
For the 2016-17 maintenance projects, there are two things, or a few things, for Holland Hill. So, I guess my question is, if, if Mr. Cullen could, could give us a kind of a state of repair on these, on these couple of things. You've got the kindergarten equipment, the portable roof repair, and then, it's like library media center carpeting. So, I guess, certainly, the portables, obviously, we want to get rid of them, but, you know, they can't leak, so that has to be done. But, in terms of the playground and the carpeting, and we've got a renovation project that we're, that we've got on the docket now.
Sure.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't maybe hold off on those things?
So, the generic answer is, I asked the same question when Tom brought these projects. We're asking for a lot of money for Holland Hill, can't, we wait? And so, the general answer is, and there's, just so people, if they want to follow along at home, there's a paragraph on each of these on pages 168 and 169, but that project is not likely to get completed for at least three years. And so, the question is, can we exist with this status for three years? And the answer is, if the answer is no, it goes in the budget. Tom, do you want to talk specifically?
You know that Tom asks for more projects that are really, really needed, that don't make it into the budget. So, if Tom was able to convince Dr. Tidal that these really, really need to be in there, he must have been doing pretty well that day.
And I read the descriptions.
So, Mr. Cullen, do you want to explain?
Right, so, Tom, Tom can chime in.
Yes, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. Certainly, the answer is no. I mean, the Holland Hill project, when the renovation actually happens, is going to be so far out, we can't just stop doing repairs and maintenance on the school building. You'll also notice, one of the questions we answered was the painting list, and there's painting at Holland Hill to do. So, we want to keep up with all the maintenance and facilities, so that they're in the best shape they can be, for the students and the staff. Explaining them that the playground here, the kindergarten playground, if you go out and look at it, it's got an awful lot of rusting on the stairs, the bolts are falling off, it's in very bad shape. It was brought to our attention by the PTA, and a playground expert that came in from the state and looked at all our playgrounds. Not only that, but we've been adding wood fiber chips to the playgrounds, and we found out this past year that you can only do that for about 10 years. After that, the wood fiber chips break down and become hard, and there's no more of a cushion. So, you need to dig all of it out and redo it with the wood fiber chips. Right now, the only playground we've done that on is Sherman, and one at Jennings. So, we need to start looking at those. So, that playground replacement is very important. The portable roof, we have two portable classrooms in the budget this year, and they are extremely old, and the roofs are starting to fail, so we want to do repairs, so that they don't leak. And the last one is the LMC carpet and flooring, the library media center carpeting, it looks like it's in good shape, but we have about two and a half months out of the year where it bubbles real bad. And a company that looked at it said it's just the moisture level in that area. So, we want to go to carpet squares. They're recommending that that might really help it. We also have two or three rooms off the LMC that need to be changed to VCT, they're teaching spaces, and the students are having trouble getting in there in wheelchairs and things. So, that explains that project.
Okay. At least on the, so, on the playground, so the, you said there was a consultant from the state that came in and looked at the playground and said that this is not going to last for three or...
We had a contract, a contracted playground company that's with the state of Connecticut come in and look at all of the playgrounds with us.
At all the elementary schools?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the one that kind of poked up on the radar?
Popped out, yeah.
Mark, can I follow up on that? If you don't mind?
Mr. Calabrese?
Thank you. Being a certified playground inspector myself, I'm assuming they provided you guys with reports on the level of need for these?
Yeah, yes, they did.
Can we get copies of those?
Yes, I can, I can look and see what they gave us in writing.
Okay. Thank you, that's all, that's all.
No problem.
That's appreciated, I'd like to see those as well.
Sure. By the way, it's the same project at Jennings. Just FYI, it's not just at Holland Hill. Same drill, same problem.
I want to get on to Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mrs. Gerber, but do your last follow-up, if you still have one?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Okay. I wanted to go back to, what was that, page 150? And, this is again, back to the textbooks. Taking that line of thought to the world language. We don't have a status update, or any type of review prior to the purchase of the new textbooks for the levels 30 and 40. I'm just wondering if we can, if we'll be getting feedback on how well those textbooks are performing, and how well utilized they are within the classroom? Because they, a few of them have been purchased already, and I did take some time before to look at them. So, I am very curious to see if, in fact, they're actually being used, and if we want to actually further invest in that series. So, I'd like to hear feedback or review to see that, in fact, teachers are enjoying it, and that students are actually utilizing it and finding them helpful.
All right, Dr. Boyce, handle this one. But, the teachers are the ones that we collectively ask to recommend textbooks to the board.
And these will be on our agenda.
And this will be on the agenda for some month in the spring.
So, please respond to the question. But, again, as Chair of the Board, trying to stay focused on adopting this year's budget, when the textbooks get presented later this spring, would probably be a more appropriate time to delve into those kind of questions. But, please, Dr. Boyce, respond.
Oh, well, just so you understand, I wasn't expecting her to give a review of the textbook. I'm actually asking if we are going to have a review of the performance of the existing textbooks.
That's a question to ask at the time the textbook comes up, but please respond.
Our World Language Coordinator, Eileen Frankel, is spending a tremendous amount of time in classrooms with middle school and high school teachers, who are implementing the new curriculum, and specifically, the new textbook. So, she is gathering information. I meet with her periodically, she fills me in, and she is starting to work with teachers to look at options for the levels 30 and 40 books. We are under no obligation to use the same series. We'll look at what's out there, but, as I think I've mentioned before, the number of publishers has decreased, and the number of options has decreased with that. So, they, as always, our teachers look at all possible options, and they, they make their recommendation to the superintendent and the board, based on what they believe is the best textbook that they will need to implement the curriculum.
Okay. But, we will do that full review, I'm assuming, prior to. Okay, thank you.
Boy, I could really put some teachers on the spot here, or out in the audience, but I won't do that.
Good. Any other final questions on this, before we move to item 3E? 125 to 177. Mrs. Gerber.
This is through Dr., through the chair to Dr. Tidal, to Mr. Cullen. I just had a couple.
Page number?
This is page 172, and page 175, and page 176.
Tom, you're back up.
So, the, the first question I had is about the, the acoustical ceilings at Osborne Hill. So, it says the system is original to the 1995 renovation. So, this is the, for the entire school, then?
Yes.
So, this is everything? And I see it says here, anticipated service life of this project will be 20 years, and since this dates back to the 95 renovation, so this is kind of at the end of its 20-year span.
Yes, we also thought, with all the work we just did at Osborne, the school, if you walk through it, you'll see the ceiling's in pretty bad shape and looking very old.
Right. But, it seems like 20 years is about the right time, anyway, so, but I just was curious if it was the entire school, or just one wing, or one part of it?
No, it's the entire school, and it's also a ceiling pad we can no longer get.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And then, the question I had, 175, Tomlinson Middle School, it just says the flooring is old. I was just curious how, how old? I always ask with things with Tomlinson, if it had ever, if anything had happened during that last renovation. I know it's getting further and further away, but, but that, this isn't back to that, this dates back before...
It goes way back.
Way back.
Yeah, and we had a repair project in the budget last year, and when we had the bid walkthrough requirement, three contractors showed up, and all three said we were wasting our money to try and do any repair.
Right.
It was so bad.
Okay.
They said that once we start pulling up the bad pieces, it's going to expand to almost 1,000, 1,200 square feet. The gym itself is only 6,000 square feet, they said you'd be throwing the money out the window.
Got it.
So we didn't do that project, and we're rebidding it, and we have an architect laying it out. It's also a size that's no longer available.
Right, okay, all right. And, and then just the last thing, this isn't really a question so much as just a statement here on page 176. So basically, here with the boilers, after assuming that the Ludlow, the two boilers at Ludlow, there will not be any boiler in our district. The oldest one will be from 1996?
Correct.
That's really exciting. I mean, I feel like I've been seeing all these boilers going rad for so many years.
Very excited about having all new boilers.
I'm sure you're more excited than I am, but yes.
Very.
Yeah.
Excited, because we don't like the opportunity for them not to work.
Exactly. And also, I just seen here with the oil tanks, there's just one from 91, and all the rest are much more recent. So again, it's just nice to see those things that cost so much money, and...
It's very nice.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you for mentioning it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're ready to move on to section 3E, Mr. Llewellyn?
When would you like to get to questions on the information that was distributed? Is that this section? So we have a package of answers that were provided?
Do you have a couple of questions on these, this area?
I do.
Please ask.
Perfect, thank you. Page nine of the January 19th package.
Of the Q and A from the January 19th session.
You got the Friday packet?
I'm there. Perfect, thank you. Pay, it's question number 37.
Yeah, health insurance.
Which references page 34, health insurance. How does our being selfish, we're no longer self-insured, just a question about the structure of the Connecticut piece. Is, is the plan that we're joining that pool of 200,000, is that a self-insured pool?
That's a self-insured pool.
So we are self-insured, but not as a town, but...
They treat us as fully insured.
Okay, but it is a self-insured plan?
Yeah, they're self-insured, and they're so huge that...
Nope, I was just clarifying, that's what I thought.
Yep.
And then, back here to attachment number one, which is the legal fees. I noticed that this says paid as of December 31st, and the total amount on here is 112,000. But when I look at the Friday packet, and I look at the financials, the financials say that we have paid, and we have the encumbered not paid. Basically, what we've spent, but we haven't, we've been invoiced, but we haven't paid, is in the almost close to 500 range, 490 some odd is on that line item in the financials. So could this get updated, please, for incurred, or add a column for encumbered? Because this says just payments.
Tori, did you hear that? Because I'm not...
I don't have the...
Why don't you come up to the mic?
It, it does balance to the actual column.
It does, but that doesn't represent what we've actually spent. It represents what we've dispersed in cash. But we've already spent 400 and some odd, right?
No, where, where do you see that?
If I go to your financials, I see that you have line 305, professional technical services. We have total expenditures of 161, but outstanding encumbrances of 331, for a total of 493.
There's more in there than legal fees.
But I've asked to have that broken out, and the bulk of that is legal fees. 95% of it's legal fees?
I'm sorry?
90 some odd percent of it's legal fees? Okay, thank you. But you can add that to the table? You can update the table with encumbrances, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So there's more in that account than legal fees?
And I've asked in the past if we could get that account broken out, because that's such a big number. Otherwise, I'll assume most of it's legal fees, because that is the vast majority of it.
Was there another question, or that was the next question on these pages?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question.
Back in here. This is Lou McCormick.
I know, you know, some of the questions were submitted, you know, over the course of the weekend or whatever, so I know time constraints might have prohibited the...
Most of the questions were submitted Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, exactly. So should we then be able to expect that anything that wasn't answered will be provided by Thursday or what have you?
I think some of the answers you'll note specifically to your questions relating to a program review that were not contemplated within the timeframe of looking at this budget. We can't do a complete program review of special education within the context of this budget. That would be something to do in the context of this.
I was really just looking for the information that had been...
Can I finish speaking?
Sure.
And so for those questions where the answer was, we do not have the time to provide that information within the short timeframe between when the question was asked and either tonight's meeting or Thursday's meeting, then in all likelihood, not. If the answer that was provided, you want to follow up and say, well, I really would like this, and ask Dr. Title to review again whether his staff can get this done by Thursday, but it's unlikely to answer your question. It's unlikely that you'll get answers beyond what you've already received in writing.
For the second part of the question. I had two parts.
Especially for the second part of the question.
Well, the first part, I'm hoping that that is just data that's within the district. That should be easy to fill. I think there's only three lines of historical data. And I think that should be, have been submitted to the state at some point anyways, so I would not, I would hope that that's not difficult. And the other part, I am actually surprised that we don't have the information readily available, since I was under the impression that it was information that's the district provides to the state annually, every year.
I'm sorry, could we just have some clarification as to what you're talking about?
The questions I submitted.
Which questions are yours? Could you reference the page, please?
Page three, question 15, 16, I think, is the one she's referring to?
Or on the back.
And a large chart with all the numbers in it?
Yeah.
Attachment five, right?
No, I don't even know where that is.
I will give a generic answer to all of these. If the information is readily available, we found it, we're providing it. Sometimes what some people think is readily available is not. And so we work day and night to get as much of this done as was humanly possible with readily available information. So you have what we can get. We've got some additional requests that came in tonight, which we'll have to work on, obviously. So whether we can get to more of this between now and Thursday is not likely.
And so you won't be providing answers to the questions? Those are questions 15, 16, and 17, that, that I think were Mrs. Lou McCormick's.
Yeah, and this is information.
Gave us a massive chart with lots of numbers on it, and we did our best to fill them out.
You don't actually have to calculate the percentages. I am capable of doing that myself, but it would be nice to have the underlying data for the population, which we should have available. I mean, we should have that available in-house, and that should be readily available, I would imagine, without too much effort. It's just student populations.
If we can continue to go over the same argument...
Well, it's not, not the same, I, I know you're, you're making the argument that it's not readily available, and I am confused by that response, because this information should be readily available in any district to the Board of Ed.
And your viewpoint?
I think it is readily available in almost every district. So, and it should be actually on the state website, lots of it, except for maybe the most current years, which we should have in-house. And then the following information, again, I'm confused that we don't have it, because it is a requirement within state statutes to have submitted that data. So, and I understand we are in compliance, because I have spoken with the state, so we have submitted that data, and therefore, all I'm asking for is to then be presented with a copy of the most recent information, and that's...
You're asking for seven years of information?
No, no, not for part two. The other one was population data, which we should have seven years worth.
The one is essentially, you're asking for a whole program review of special ed.
No, I'm not looking for seven years worth.
We are way over the top.
We are going over the same ground on the same arguments, from your perspective and Dr. Title's perspective. As I say, if you want to follow up more directly with Dr. Title on your personal concern, you ought to call him and continue that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
3E, discussion of the superintendent's recommended 2016-17 budget request and changes suggested by members. For those who watch the budget process, you know that the Board of Finance, as well as the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Finance specifically, holds a session before they vote on the budget, where, where finance board members suggest to their colleagues what changes they might be contemplating, not only so that their colleagues can be brought up to date, but so that the proper math can be done on the impact of those changes, plus or minus. So that's what we've done over the last two years, and we're doing it again this year. So I would ask any board members if they have areas that they are going to be recommending and want to inform the Board of that at this time. And again, reminding that if you, you of course are free to bring up an idea on Thursday. The danger in that is if you bring up an idea on Thursday that has not been vetted by the staff, especially by the finance department, it makes it more difficult for the Board to consider and actually act on that. So it really is in your best interest to suggest something. Not that I'm wanting you to suggest something, but nonetheless, so that you understand the importance of this part of it. Mrs., Ms. Pitko, Ms. Pitko?
This isn't a question, more of just a statement. I realize Anthony and I, being new to the Board of Ed, I took ample time reviewing the budget and asking the questions I needed to ask, so that when we came to this meeting, I didn't have to ask a lot of questions. I'm hoping that the members that are on this team, you, you guys asked some very in-depth questions, and, and I appreciate that, and I'm learning all from you. But I give a lot of credit to everybody who did the work to put into this budget, and I would hope that we would show them that respect.
I see nobody's hands up, so shall we go to public comment? Going once, going twice, to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to address the Board concerning the budget. Although we looked at specific pages tonight, you are welcome to address us on anything within the budget, or the PowerPoint, or the Q and A that was, has been provided in the back. Both documents, the 19th and the 26th. Again, you have three minutes for whatever comment that you wish to make, so please step forward. State your name and address if you are coming forward. Try and avoid the rush down the center aisle. Okay, please step forward.
I don't think that's what he was...
Did I have to give my address, really?
Just give your name.
Give your name, the school that you're related to, or neighborhood, or whatever.
I was just...
It is proper for us to name, ask name and address, but I have...
It is, okay, I'm sorry, it's my first time.
But I have not worried too much about the exact address. Sometimes people just say, here's the street I live on. Your pleasure.
Okay, my name is Stephanie Seifert, I live on Westwood Road, and my children go to Stratfield. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. And I just have a question about the math. The projected...
A comment, as, if you're new to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
I am, no, please.
If you're new to public comment, we take public comments, but this is not a Q and A and response.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then maybe you can tell me when I can...
Sure.
Or who I would talk to about this. I just want to know where the 500 and, I took my glasses off, where the $550,000 number comes from? If you're budgeting for that, where does, where did that number come from? Like, how did you come?
What page number again?
153. The projected cost for the elementary math textbook and parent resources. Right, I was just wondering where that $550,000 number came from? How did you come to that particular number?
On, I think on Tuesday's meeting, for the publics who is here, there is an average cost of a textbook that the staff look at, what do math textbooks cost, and then how many grades do we have to cover, how many kids are in that grade, so how many books do we have to cover, so they, they do that math. We have not taken a bid for a textbook, because we've not chosen one yet.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Since it was a fairly simple question, I thought I would respond. But normally, so that you know, we don't engage in a dialogue, because it just would be too long to, to do that.
Thank you for answering.
Anybody else coming forward? I like to do this. Please state your name and address.
Trudy Durrell, Woodcrest Road, Holland Hill parent, and Fairfield Woods parent, but tonight, I'm, I'd like to just, in public comment, address the question that came up about Holland Hill and the playground. And I will tell you that the PTA has been pushing for quite some time about the kindergarten playground. It's not a new issue. So I would certainly ask that you support that particular aspect, regardless of the fact that we've asked for a renovation, and there is a, there are approved ed specs now. The outdoor playground is different. It's not necessarily part of the building renovation, and it would be very unfortunate that the children in the incoming kindergarten classes for the next several years would have inappropriate play, and I really mean inappropriate, and unsafe playground equipment to have to use. So just thank you very much. I thought I'd offer that perspective from a parent's point of view. The playground is definitely an issue. Thank you.
Anybody else coming forward? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the Board. Either regular for adjournment, or if there's a last-minute burning question. Yeah, okay, I'll, I've got one, two, three last-minute burning questions, right? Mr. Llewellyn, you're up first.
I meant to ask this earlier, my apologies. Page 161, when we talk about the acquisition of projection systems in the classroom, is that the capture device that was being talked about several months ago?
No, you're talking about the document camera? No.
Is that in this budget anywhere?
That's not in the budget anywhere. Document cameras are not included.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
On the topic of budget adjustments, there's only one thing that's staying with me, and that I would ask perhaps for a defense of for Thursday. But what's sticking with me is the PSAT, PSAT testing for grade nine. We have one, two, we're down to what, five grades now with, without a standardized test in them. I think we were making fabulous, I don't, I apologize, I'm not supposed to be proposing the argument at this point, but that would be the one issue. So this is hardly a true financial impact, it's more of a philosophical one, but I believe I'll be raising that on Thursday.
Mr. Patton?
If I could ask, through the Chair, through Dr. Title, to Mr. Cullen, on, in the answers of the packet of questions that we got in our packet on...
What date?
Attachment...
No, which date, the 19th or the 26th?
The first, the 19th, sorry.
19th.
19th, attachment number two, where his maintenance project's not funded. These are the ones that he wanted, but we didn't get, right?
Somebody asked the question, what are the projects Mr. Cullen wanted to get in the budget, but weren't in there? So this is the next set of projects.
So there are several, and, and they're, they're expensive, needed repairs to the Walter Fitzgerald campus. But isn't it my understanding that we leased that building, so are we responsible for the repairs for such large things on it? I mean, I could see maintenance, you know, lights, or, you know, something breaks, but like, that's, you know, remove asbestos tile and replace carpet in hallways, you know, it sounds like an awfully large thing, and I'm sure it's probably needed, because I've been in that building a couple of times. But are we, I mean, I guess why are we responsible for that?
Would be considered a cosmetic upgrade. Cosmetic upgrades in the lease would relate to painting, carpet replacement, signage, things like that. Major things like roof repairs, HVAC equipment, boiler, the owner is responsible.
Okay.
Now unfortunately, all of that old carpet in that building is on VAT, vinyl asbestos tile.
That was my question. So you've got this old asbestos tile that the stuff is stuck to, and because it's attached to carpeting, which is kind of a minor cosmetic thing, the carpeting itself is not?
It's not, but when they pull it up, if any tile comes with it, it automatically becomes hazardous material and has to be dealt with accordingly.
And if that happens, or if it gets pulled up by accident or whatever, that's a maintenance thing that we have to deal with, or they have to deal with?
We probably could work with them on the asbestos piece, hazardous material.
That's where I'm going, with all the problems we've had with abatements and all that stuff, and we don't own the building.
Yeah, correct.
I was just kind of where the liability live.
That's right.
Okay.
So, and the list we provided you is a priority list. We've been doing that for a long time, priority ones, twos, and threes. The ones try and make it to the budget request, and the twos and threes get looked at each year to see if they're getting worse, and we move them around. It's a living document.
So, no, I wasn't certainly questioning your, or the staff's decisions on, on what to prioritize. It was more on, on that particular campus, on, you know, why would be, we be responsible for those types of things?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so for the Thursday meeting, it is a regular meeting, and so we have some normal business to take, take up. We do have the one BILAR amendment that Mrs. Maxon Cannelly had as a first read at the last regular meeting. You got a memo, I think in the Friday packet, indicating that, that in addition to the acceptance of the policy being recommended with a first read at the last meeting, they will recommend the deletion of the, it's not a competing policy, but it's a policy in the, in the same vein, which would make it redundant. And so they will, the committee will come forward with a, not only the approval of policy 5514, but you'll see that we put on the agenda the deletion of 5515. I'm assuming, unless I hear from people, that, that that makes sense to you. We talked about it at the last meeting. And then, of course, we'll move into the adoption of the recommended budget. So that's what Thursday's meeting looks like. So, that's what Thursday's meeting looks like. Motion to adjourn? Anybody like to? A motion to adjourn, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Patton, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much.